Good afternoon. My name is Will Jones. I'm the chairman of the Oklahoma County Planning Commission, and I'm calling to order the May 18th meeting. First order of business is a roll call. Tyler, will you take care of that?
The members of the Oklahoma County Planning Commission, this is Irene Martin, Mr. David Ritchie, I'm sorry, Mr. James Benson, Mr. Will K. Jones, Mr. Charles DeFuria, and Commissioner Ray Vaughn. We have a call.
Thank you very much. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting which took place on April the 20th. You have all received copies of the minutes. Are there any additions to the meeting? Corrections? Any comments on the minutes for that meeting? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 20th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded that we approve. Any discussion? Discussion? Call for a vote? Roll call.
This is Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie. Mr. Benson. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeFuria.
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Next item on the agenda is an item that's been deferred in the past. Discussion and possible action to amend zoning regulations to revoke special use permits after five years if development does not occur. Do you have a presentation on that?
Not really, other than just to remind you, the rationale behind this discussion was that we had a lot of special use permits that sit idle that's been there up to 50 years, and no action has been taken on those. And they stay on the books. And lo and behold, someday they'll jump up, and we say, wow, is that place already zoned for that? And there's a special use permit sitting there. It's been there for years. So rather than let them become stalemate, we would like to see those go away at some point or another. And the discussion is whether or not we should do this at this time or wait for our master plan development, where we want to make a lot of changes to maybe the zoning regulation and the subdivision regulation. Do you want to enact it immediately at this time? Or do you want to wait until later?
Okay, thank you. Tyler's raised a question, lady and gentleman. What do we want to do? Do we want to take on changing the zoning regulation with regard to the special use permits? Or shall we allow it to slide to the time when we redo our master plan? Eric, when is the master plan due to proceed? That we'll have that.
That's a good question.
The budget board did not approve funding for that item today. So I don't know where that leaves us.
All right. That's disappointing.
I made everyone aware of the need, and told them that we would need funds sometime during FY '18. Sorry. We do have reserve funds in place that we would be able to draw from if and when it's needed. And so I think the preference of the budget board was kind of to wait until we are ready. But I think the funding will be there when we're ready to go.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Tyler, do you know which provision? Can you show it to me real quickly? That authorizes the issuance of these permits? Because I'm wondering whether or not when the next application comes up, that perhaps it couldn't just be crafted and made a part of that permit? So it's individualized.
Yeah, copy of it.
It might solve the problem.
Chairman, I am Claire. I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, for instance, you have an applicant who would like to build a mobile home park parcel.
Right.
They need to come in and make applications, correct? So if the board-
For a special use permit, yeah.
Uh-huh. So if the board were to approve it, it would be conditioned that the mobile home park be completed by X date period? Or the budget to be declared void?
That's the contemplated result.
Right. Which you could put it part in parcel and as part of the verbiage in the special use permit.
You can. Now, is this an item? Tyler, is this to amend? I read this as to amend the current zoning regulations to revoke the special use permits that we've already identified. Is that not the case?
That's not how I'm reading it at all. I'm reading it whether you want to amend your zoning regulations so every application that comes through would be subject to that in the future.
Yeah, that's the ultimate goal.
Well, that's what he's... He's not talking about old permits.
Okay, well-
Or new ones.
We're also kind of at the point where we're ready to do that, aren't we? To make a recommendation to the board regarding those that we've examined. Yeah, because Tyler referenced those in his comments. Okay.
Will we complete the examination in June? Did you say no?
No. The ones that you have met this board are moving back to June, you know, the meeting. But there are others that's scheduled next month.
Okay, so the revocations are taking place beast may o' let. We take a batch to the commissioners, and they then would vote to revoke those special use permits.
Yeah, that was the original plan, but we decided to move them forward and get some of them done. And so the market board met the planning commission and said, I'm going to send them forward. And then the remainder, they'll reach the board. I believe we're complete after June. They're set to go after June.
After June.
And we can put those together in May, August, sometime, before the county commission.
All right. So what we're talking about now is setting down what the rules are going to be in the future. Either we pass on our recommendation for action to the commissioners defining this five-year limitation, or we wait until the finish of the master plan and let that include the five-year limitation. Have any more discussion on that?
Another one of the questions also is if five years or 10 years or whatever, this was just found out for discussion. I don't know if it's been written solidly or if that's the way we want to do it. The whole idea was discussed, and they're not necessarily called upon today. But just discuss it among the planning machines and come to where you want to go.
I've got a question. The way this is written, if development does not occur, would that be from, let's say, the start of construction to the finish of construction? In other words, if they began construction in year four, but it took two years to finish the project?
I'd say it's maybe the start.
To the start.
Move dirt. Most of those special use permits that did happen, they didn't move the dirt.
30 years, 50 years. Nothing happened.
So it happens.
If development does not commence within five years? Yeah.
That's the way those cities have it.
Any other discussion? What would you like to see us provide you with, Tyler? A direction on this? A recommendation? Okay.
How do you want to do it?
If I can weigh in, my personal preference would be to go ahead and address the recommendation. Because who knows what kind of special use permits are going to be requested between now and whenever we get the master plan completed. I would rather see it done sooner than later.
And it will be in the form of a recommendation to the commission?
Correct.
If someone would like to-
You would be supplementing the current regulation is what you would be doing. As a supplement.
Someone like to do a motion?
I think our attorney would like there to be some better definition of what regulation we are amending. Is that what I hear over there?
No, I'm kind of confused as to what procedure is being contemplated. Tyler, I thought that the planning commission made amendments to the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations with final approval by the board of county commissioners. Am I mistaken?
Board of county commissioners.
Yeah.
But does this board have the authority to amend either set of regulations?
I don't think that's what we're trying to do, counselor. What we're trying to do is to decide on whether we want to go with the master plan or a recommendation to the board changing the master plan.
How does the master plan affect the duration of a special use permit?
Usually during the master plan, there's a new set of regulations.
You mean the zoning reg-
Yeah, zoning regulations, subregulations.
Okay.
Made at the life master plan.
Somebody's really asking us, do you want to do it immediately or do you want to wait?
Okay. And it's been suggested that we do it immediately. To do that, I'm going to need a motion from someone.
I will make a motion that we recommend to the county commissioners to amend the zoning regulations to revoke special use permits after five years if development does not occur.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we make a recommendation to the board of county commissioners that we amend the zoning regulation to revoke special use permits after five years if development does not occur. Now, do we want to define development as a completed project or start moving dirt? Doesn't make any difference?
I can't imagine us allowing a special use permit to expire while construction's underway. So you could say simply by after five years if development is not initiated or however you want to word it. But we can, and even the board can maybe take over that a little bit. Obviously, we don't want the deFurias situation to arise.
That the person who made the motion and seconded, is that all right with you?
Then you want the motion maybe to be amended that we suggest to the county commissioners amend zoning regulations to revoke special use permits after five years if development has not started?
Are you all right on the second?
I think you seconded it.
I said it, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you, Richie. It's been moved and seconded that we take this action. Does anyone have any discussion? We'll hear a vote to pass this motion.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeFuria?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vaughn.
All right. It's passed. So, moving on to item number six is a discussion and possible action to approve or deny a zoning change from Z 2017-01 for commercial property zoned by PUD 2012-02A to CG urban general commercial and office district. Tyler, do you have a staff report?
Yeah, that's a mouthful. I know. Okay, this project started back in 2014. Started out as a PUD with a general and general plat in 2014. And I think there was a lot of protest against a lot of houses in this area. And the property owner and developer decided to change it in 2016 to a PUD with AA agricultural, which meant much larger lots, the minimum being two acre size lots, and with a little commercial property on the end. And that was approved. And May of this year, the process is that they would like to change the actual general PUD portion where the commercial part was to expand its use so that there'll be more uses allowed in that commercial area. That is what's before you today is to allow that commercial area to expand its uses. Without discussing a bunch of numbers and PUDs. There's a representative here for the Craft and Toll and Associates. Would you like to give her a briefing on that, if you'd like?
Okay, but before we do that, attached to the report that I've received, there is a list of permitted uses outright in urban general commercial and office. Is this what? Is this the objective? Is this list?
Yes.
To add this list to whatever list is already exist?
Let it automatically be those. And I think in the PUDs, they had specific businesses they wanted in there. But now they're expanded to all the uses in CG.
I don't mean to interrupt, but basically, if you look on the first page of the staff report, originally with the PUD, those uses is what was being excluded.
This is the bottom.
Right. In the original PUD that's there currently, those items were being excluded. So if you're going back to CG, you're including the list that you spoke of, but also these as well.
Also these?
That's right.
All right. Okay. Any more questions for Tyler, from the commissioners?
I have one for you, Tyler. Looking at the second page, it says, each lot will be served by subject or with a possible well or possible Deer Creek water. Is that a complete application? With one or the other?
They have the size of lots that allow them to have choice.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? So what we're basically doing, and I'll have Mr. Hall come up in a moment, is going back to a PUD that includes the seven items on the front page of the staff report. Is that correct?
Four of that. Business area.
Yeah, that business part. The park hasn't expanded. Everything.
That all stays the same. It's AA, and there'll be residential homes built there.
All right. Mr. Hall, would you want to make a presentation?
Good afternoon. I'm Kendall Dillon with Craft and Toll. That's all right. I'll go by whatever name you want to call me. So I represent the applicant. Obviously, this is an application on a piece of property that you all are familiar with. Just a real quick, Tyler's already given you a little bit of history, but just to clarify a couple things. If you recall, back in 2014, we proposed a PUD for the entirety of the quarter section, which you all ended up approving. Inside of that PUD, there were two tracks. There was one track, which was the same identical size. It was Track 1, which included the commercial corner that is up for discussion today. And then the remainder of the quarter section was another track that included the single-family residential component of the PUD. At that time, we got the PUD approved that it would have municipal sewer and water. And then shortly after getting the approval, we had some complications with Deer Creek water, and they were not able to fulfill our agreement. And so they could not adequately serve 197 single-family lots. So that being the case, my clients opted to move their family farm to this location. It's a great area, a great school district, a good place to raise a family. So they decided that that's what they would do. So we come back in last year to rezone everything but the commercial corner, the Track 1 of the original PUD, back to agricultural zoning. And my clients are currently in the process of building their houses, their barns, and moving their family farm to this location. But what that did is that left, obviously, Track 1 or the commercial track under the current PUD. The reason that we're here is because, as you're well aware, your subdivision regulations require that all PUDs have at least 15% common area in those. And so it was not a big deal when it was a PUD that covered the full quarter section, and we had the residential component because we could meet the 15% common area requirements, put it in, and it functions well as an amenity for the residential. Since we've obviously rezoned the residential component and we're left with the commercial component, then that same 15% rule would apply to what's left in our commercial zoning. So now, your code does not differentiate on that requirement between residential PUDs or commercial PUDs. So what we'd be left with is a little over an acre that would be a common area in a commercial PUD, which in our opinion is not the intent of the ordinance, nor would it make good sense. It would not be utilized. It would just be a burden to the commercial property owners. So that's the purpose of our application today is to rezone it back to CG to alleviate the common area requirement. It's not to... Now granted, with this rezoning, the items, the seven items that you see on that Page 1 would become acceptable uses. However, if you will look at those items, you can see that that is not our intent, nor would these items ever go at that corner. Parking garage, lodging, campgrounds, truck stops. It's pretty obvious by common sense that those are not uses that would ever come in at this corner, nor is it my client's idea to put those there. So that's the reason for our application. And then as far as the merits, if you look at it, immediately to the west, I think that parcel is somewhere around 20 acres that is just straight CG. We have, obviously, the church just north of us with another PUD around it, and then commercial at the corner. So I think if you look at it as a whole, we're trying to prevent, or to get out, just to be frank with you, the one acre of common area in a commercial PUD that makes no sense to us from a development standpoint. It's completely compatible with the surrounding properties. You have a landscape company, two fence companies, a railroad tie company, a feed company, some of those sort of things. So given the fact that we're our own neighbor, my clients obviously are going to build the buildings and own those as well. So we feel like that it's a reasonable request, and we'd ask for your approval.
Gretchen, have anything? No questions?
Question is Mr. Trumbo, if I'm right.
Stacy?
In the PUD proposal, Mr. Trumbo, there's a requirement that there either be a construction of an additional lane for the center line, initially total wood, an additional lane running the entire length of the property to be constructed to county standard. And then it says, existing pavement shall be overlaid to the center line with two inches of asphalt. So is it five inches of asphalt in a new lane plus two inches of asphalt on the top of the existing?
Yeah, I think that's what was contemplated originally. Just still being commercial, they would still have that turn lane requirement because it's commercial fronting.
I'm looking more at the standard as to what the lane would be, how it would be built. Since county standard is now five inches, is it not?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I don't think that the language is in the PUD document. I think that's simply, and Mr. Trumbo can correct me, but I think that's just your subdivision regulations that regardless if it's a PUD or straight CG zoning that the development and plat would require to whatever standard is turned.
Yeah, they'll have to build that turn lane with five inches of asphalt, and they'll have to tie it in. So you're not going to pay anything less than two inches on a tie-in.
Trying to make sure that the language you hear doesn't pry our hands on what in our normal county standard would be.
No, he'll still be required to do that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this issue, either pro or con? Yes, sir, come forward and identify yourself. And also tell us what your relationship is to this area.
Okay. My name is C.L. Hunter, and I own the 13 acres just straight south of where they're planning on building this section right here. Is it going to be a cul-de-sac in there? I'm wondering what-
That's not this project.
Further along?
Yeah.
That's the other island. Okay. That's the water we can, that's further along. Further along? I was just wondering about the water.
Well, we'll talk about that when we get to the project, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Commissioners, someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the PUD 2012-02A be rezoned to CG.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we change Z 2017-01 from PUD to a CG. PUD 2012, excuse me. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeFuria?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to number seven. Discussion and possible action to approve, deny, to approve or deny the preliminary plat of Mayflower Market, which is PP 2017-01.
Yes, this is a-
Preliminary plat.
Is a companion to the zoning that you just approved. This is actually the preliminary plat that he has brought forward for our approval of the plat. He has submitted drawings and plans for construction to us. And I relate to the county engineer if there's any things that need to be adjusted on the plat. But as far as I know, everything is complete.
Stacy? Is that a small chance? Kendall? Have you determined any access for this?
Yes, I'll send you an exhibit. But we'll conform to your code, right? 150 feet from the central intersection, 200, 200 feet between drives.
Was there any consideration maybe to sharing one, shared driveway?
We'll consider that. Like I say, I think currently, the way we have it set up, I think we may already be sharing at least one drive. But we'll meet the 200-foot separation.
With that, I'm okay with it. All right. Any other questions? Thank you. If anyone would like to speak either for or against this preliminary plat? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve or disapprove of this preliminary plat for Mayfair Market.
I make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat of Mayflower Market, PP 2017 dash O1.
Do I hear a second?
I'll make a second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve preliminary plat, PP 2017 dash O1. We'll have a voice call close.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DePerea?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vaughn.
All right.
Item eight, nine, and 10 are items that I'm going to recuse myself from, and turn it over to Mr. Benson.
My name is Jim Benson, I'm Vice Chairman of the Commission on the Percivalion, which should not be part of this, and he will not be part of any of the discussions or votes. We're now talking about then item number eight, discussion of possible action to approve, deny, general plat of Cheval, GP 2017 dash O1. Matthew, please.
Yes, the Cheval was, came to us previously, and it was just dropped because of, I believe it was a zoning issue. It's coming back to us without a zoning change, or property will remain AA agricultural and rural residential, as the surrounding properties is. It's a small plat with the minimum acreage, would be two acres per lot.
Any questions, Tyler? Thank you. Did anyone here would like to speak for? Please state your name and address for.
Yes, sir, my name is Terry Haynes. I'm with SMC Consulting Engineers, 815 West Main, Oklahoma City. I'm here on behalf of the developer, Cheryl Willingham, who's also here in the audience on the, on the development. We've reviewed the staff comments, and are in agreement with those comments, and have addressed them in the general plat, and in the next item, the preliminary plat. I stand for any questions you might have. We do ask for your approval of this general plat.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Haynes, I'm a little unfamiliar, I guess, with it, but it looks to me like there's a barn already there. Are you going, is this going to be a neighborhood that is made up of people that have horses? Is the back area going to be used for horses?
That's the, that is correct, Mr. Vaughn. There is an existing barn on the, on the back 20 acres or so. That area will become a common area, and a common area for the entire neighborhood. Mrs. Willingham has plans to expand that existing barn, and incorporate the architecture that is planned within the subdivision.
The, may I follow up? The area on the area over here, that's kind of the brown area, has that been some kind of a strip mine or a mining operation?
There is some history with that area, and the purpose of bringing this before the board as a general plat and preliminary plat is to correct some measures that were taken out there over the last several years that Mrs. Willingham has had to deal with. So the preliminary plat includes plans to shape, reshape that excavated area into ponds, which are amenities to the neighborhood. And those plans also include stormwater quality measures that would be in place initially, and would follow throughout the development and the creation of the pond, the extension of Cheval Drive. And also, you can see on the preliminary plat drawing on the screen, there is a short cul-de-sac which serves two lots along May Avenue.
Okay, so these will be residential lots that will be sold off for single-family residential use?
Yes, sir.
And there will be a, you anticipate there'll be a lake in the area that's been dredged?
That is correct. We are, we're planning on a lake, as well as some water features, if you will, as an amenity to the neighborhood. Common area where folks can walk or walk around, and then the, as we discussed, the, on the east side of the property is where the, the horse pasture will be located with the barn.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Any other questions?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at this drawing here, and there's, there's some green, green lines. What, now what do those green lines signify? What, in the lower corner, the, the lower southwest corner there, there's, yeah, those, those green lines, what is that?
That's actually where the, there's a existing gravel dirt road that runs through the property now, and to, to redevelop that area which has been excavated, the brown area that you see on the map. That is where our construction crews need to enter, and actually, that's where they've been using. But it also cuts across this particular lot, it's a, it's a temporary road for construction until the, until the major work and corrections are completed, and then that, that green line through there will go away.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
In your design on Lot 12 and Lot 13, why was it necessary to have a cul-de-sac coming out?
Good question. It's primarily because of the excavated area, that brown area that you see on the screen. There is really not a, an easy trail or roadway that could circulate around from Cheval, Cheval Drive to serve those two lots. Those actually are two of the most premier lots on this, on this property. One would be basically hidden within the trees, and between the two common areas. So it is a, as far as a, as far as a residential lot, would be one of the premier lots. The only way to access is off of May Avenue to those, to those two lots. We have sighted it, the minimum distance from the property corner of 150 feet to center, and then incorporated the county's cul-de-sac design.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
I've got another question.
Yes, sir.
Now, the, the water features, are they, I mean, could you outline it just maybe on that, on that drawing there, just, I mean, do you have an idea of where these water features will ultimately?
We do, we do. I'll, I'll do my best outline it. There is a drawing that we submitted to, to the engineers in county's office, which shows the grading. I'm not sure, Tyler, if you might have that.
I found the preliminary plat, this is just the general idea, but we can get into that discussion if you'd like.
Well, we could wait, we can wait until, until then, Tyler. Okay, well, you've got it there.
All right. Just drawing, drawing.
Shows the existing, the topography or the contours across the development. This is the existing condition in this area. There is a drawing that was submitted that shows this area to be shaped, and, and part of the water features will extend across the common area B, and, and all the way over here to Lot 4, in this area, as far as potential fountains and, and features that will be amenities to Lots 3 and 4. This Lot 2 is also backed up against the pond areas, so the pond is extending and touching Lot 2, Lot 1, Lot 13, and Lot 12. And then, and, and the reason why we were unable to access Lot 12 and 13 from Cheval's Drive is because of this lake feature extending to the southernmost property line. Also, there's an existing pond, two ponds out here, that were constructed previously. Those also are, are water features, with a nice bridge, waterfall design that was already built, and that connects Common Area D with Common Area A. And then A also has a pond and water features area.
Brown area would, pretty much the, the water feature would follow this brown area. Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Would there be someone in the audience who would like to talk? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
To talk against this. Again, please give your name and address, so I can.
My name is Ryan Robertson. Address is 22800 North May Avenue. The property is directly south of what you see on the screen. Little K-cup property. And I apologize, first time in front of the Planning Commission, so I don't speak the acronym language, so trying to keep along with you guys.
No problem. Are you, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but are you talking about the little line that hugs the, the property, or the larger line that, that, oh, okay.
The little property, yes, straight south to it.
Gotcha. I think I got a letter from you, right?
Yes, so I dropped off some information yesterday, in regards to, I'm not sure what you call it, petition, protest, questions, concerns, which is why I'm here today. So I've been living with this project, if you want to call it that, for the last four years or so. Have great concerns about any projects going forward, in regards to this property, because it has been an absolute nightmare and disaster to live with. So, I'm not necessarily against what I see on the screens here, I just have grave concerns that it would ever get done. So I have concerns with the process of how that's managed, the consequences to it not being done properly. It's the issues that it's caused to myself and my family, based upon what's happened, is just not something that I can easily allow to continue going forward. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to this, I'm just not for it either. So I'm not really sure where that leaves us. I'm looking for some direction, I'm looking for some protection for my property, for my family, for our peace and way of life. I'm not sure how many of you got the, the letter that I put in. I tried to make it as factual and clear to the point as I could. I was asked to keep it at one page, and unfortunately, that wouldn't be possible where you could still read it. So it's just, the history of events that have happened here is just, it's, it's mind-boggling. So it's the water control concerns that we have, the measures that we have taken amongst ourselves to alleviate that pressure, the, the noise controls, the just outright disrespect for your neighbor is why I'm here.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Well, maybe I should say too, that the county has regulations and inspectors that look to toward drainage problems, and once we approve something, the whole, one of the whole deals we talked about on the agenda is you have to start and finish something within the best fight of any time.
Yeah.
That was a question I had, and I wasn't sure this was the form to do it. The hole that's been dug, the mine that was allowed to operate, I never saw a zoning request, or a zoning change request come to my recognition, and maybe it happened 20 years ago, like Mr. Tyler had said, they just stay on the books forever. Certainly, had I known that someone was going to put a strip mine top fill, red dirt mine next to my home, I probably wouldn't have bought it in the first place. So that was another question, is it just allowed to operate forever? Is it allowed to operate within the proximity of residential homes?
Unfortunately, mining operations are not all under the terms of your plan.
Exact, so, okay. But is it considered as an item that's, as you can see what's on the map now, what's in the pictures in front of you now, is it, does it continue? I mean, is it, is it part of this decision of this council to?
Well, you know, I'd like to make a comment. I, I looked at the AA agricultural zoning regulations, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tyler, but did it, does it include a sanitary landfill? Okay, I, let's, okay, I think it was on Page 9.
What, what you're referring to is, yes, it's under the AA zoning category, but it's a special use permit. So if it's a special use permit, it's heard by the Planning Commission before that activity can begin.
Okay, so, so there was no special use permit issued for, for this particular property, okay? So that, well, well, this mining operation.
But it was represented, I'm sorry, it was represented as a landscaping feature. It was a pond.
Yeah, I know, but it is not something that's framed in. Well, you're out there, you're out there helping the land, you're allowed to dig there? To dig as deep as you want, build, build pond?
Okay, all right, okay.
Then I have a good permit for that. Okay.
I've got a question. So, so does it mean then that whatever mining dirt happened in the past, if we approved this general plat, then what we're seeing here is what will be done to the property?
This is what she can propose, that they, she is not proposing doing any mining or whatever. This property was going on when she bought the first, but that's not her intention.
But that's, no.
So these houses.
The current owner of the land was the current owner when I bought my land. And if you look at my time lapse pictures from satellite, when I purchased the home, there's absolutely nothing there, nothing. So, and I was going to also comment on the September 2013, the one that was just dropped or never happened, if you notice, there was no common areas, there were no common areas on our short shared border. There are now, because there's a giant pit on that shared border. That's why it's a common area. So we didn't oppose this one, because we obviously knew it's her property, she can do with whatever she wants with her property, along with permission of this, of this board, of course. But.
But it was represented, I'm sorry, it was represented as a landscaping feature. It was a pond.
Yeah, I know, but it is not something that's planned in. Well, you're out there, you're out there helping the land. You're allowed to dig there?
To dig as deep as you want, build, build pond?
For land.
Okay, alright, okay.
Then I have to go to permit for that.
Okay.
I've got a question. So, so does it mean then that whatever mining dirt happened in the past, if we approved this general plat, then what we're seeing here is what will be done to the property?
This is what she can propose, that they, she is not proposing, uh, doing any mining or whatever. This property was going on when she bought the first, uh, property, but that's not her intention.
But that's, no.
So these houses?
The current owner of the land was the current owner when I bought my land. And if you look at my time lapse pictures from satellite, when I purchased the home, there's absolutely nothing there. Nothing. So, and I was going to also comment on the September two thousand thirteen, the one that was just dropped or never happened. If you notice, there was no common areas. There were no common areas on our short shared border. There are now because there's a giant pit on that shared border. That's why it's a common area. So we didn't oppose this one because we obviously knew it's her property. She can do with whatever she wants with her property along with permission of this, of this board, of course. But that's why there's a common area now. It's because it can't be used as anything else because it's worthless property because of what's been done to it, which has then affected my property, has affected the manner in which we live and the manner in which we do things. Just because what's been allowed to go directly north of our home.
How, how deep is that hole?
Trying to figure out which elevation you're at, I would say. At its deepest point to the highest point, forty-five? Just guessing. So, I mean, it's the...
Is it red clay?
Oh, yeah, it's hell on earth. Yes. Yeah. The joke we tell all our friends is I'm pretty sure that a movie Martian could have been filmed there. So, yeah, it's, uh, it's pretty bad.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
I look at the pictures that we have on three, on five fourteen, and then I look at fi- uh, three fifteen. I notice two concrete, one going north and one going south.
Yes.
Why would you, I mean, why? Is, are those there going off your property?
No, that is my driveway. There's one, the, the property, driveway to the south is for the property behind mine. I believe it's the two two eight, two two seven, two zero is their address. The little driveway.
Yes, they're just a small, looks like...
Yes, that's my driveway to my home because it was a dirt and gravel road that every time it would rain, I would lose all of my dirt and gravel. So we put in a, we're using it for two purposes. One is trying to control the water to get it to go where we need it to go because we have three spots along that border that the water naturally tries to drain to, and we're using that. It was either putting in a curb water diversion or we just put in a driveway.
I just never had seen that. I'm just furious. Thank you.
It was the cheapest alternative that we could find at the time, so.
Well, I was wondering if it was going to be accessed to the property to the north?
No.
As a road?
Oh, you're talking, the little cutout there?
Yes.
That's parking for the trainer, for the horse arena directly across from it. So, to keep her off the, it's a, probably about a foot and a half drop off that driveway in certain areas. So to keep her off that property, just gave her a parking spot.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions from Mr. Robertson, please? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to sit against this proposal? I'd like my party to listen closely to this, make sure I'm not an old man who mixed up and befuddled. We had, uh, this commission had no say over the mining operation. They did not prove it. It was just there and we've done, we can only assume by the proper, uh, authorities with the owners. Or we don't know.
I, from what I'm hearing, through the light, the county wasn't aware of what was going on.
Okay. So, we're not here to try to correct a past thing and we had no, nothing to do with it, okay? So the proposition is to, to look at the future use of the land, not the past use of the land, and to make a decision whether this, this was allowed or not.
Correct. That's definitely proposed, okay.
In that case, if there's no further discussion, then I would accept.
I'd like, I have one question, county engineer. Do you see a possible problem with that cul-de-sac for twelve? Lot twelve and thirteen?
No, it's just like having two entrances into a subdivision and their separation's throwing us apart. And, and I'm okay with the arrangement of that access off that road.
And the cul-de-sac's large enough. I don't pick a bus over when there, but it'll have to meet the standards.
Yes, we have a, a minimum size.
Yeah.
So they can turn around.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I've got one more question for Stacy. Now, the water features, uh, will, will you be involved in, you know, when the construction starts to make sure that?
From a standpoint of stormwater runoff,
Right.
there has to be enough, uh, detention. I mean, it's obviously going to be a retention pond for aesthetics and it'll have to have enough, uh, storage for the detention aspect as well. But obviously, from the size of it, it's going to be able to serve as both. Basically, your landowners have the right to, um, clear their land, you know, to a certain extent, even many of them sell dirt to people, maybe contractors. As long as they don't disturb over an acre, uh, they can do that. Once you get above an acre, which this probably is, probably should have been a permit pulled from the state DEQ. And I don't know whether she pulled that permit or not. Um, but what she was probably doing was planning a future pond for future development, but, which is typically what happens is somebody will sell the dirt, they get paid for the dirt, plus they've got a pond feature for their stormwater runoff and a future development.
So this future development?
Which is what you're saying, yeah.
Right, and likely they, DEQ would be involved to make sure that, uh, the water feature met all these storm runoff requirements and?
Well, that's really us on the stormwater aspect. They would have been making sure that the, uh, erosion and stuff didn't come off that site from that dirt operation. That would have been the DEQ's responsibility.
Okay, alright.
I've, I've got another question. Um, in the, in the protest letter from Mr. Robertson, it does talk about, um, trees. Are, is there like a line of trees right now between, uh, between your property and this proposed area? Um, is, is there a line of trees already? Um, you talked about here about wanting to buy some property that had the trees on it.
Yes, yes, that was a great concern of ours. The way our house is situated where it's packed off around the corner of the, we call it the K-cut. Yeah, there is a line of trees all the way along that shared border, uh, which most of them have been okay. And then, of course, in that property where currently lot, um...
Look, I can read that, whatever that lot is, yeah. There used to be a very thick dense group of trees that provided privacy from May Avenue, provided noise, or got rid of the noise as well off of that road.
Um, so, yes, those are the, the trees that were in question. And of course, on this picture, it doesn't do a very good job representing what it was and how many are gone now. But there's piles of them that were torn down. And so now it's a direct view and a direct, and basically, there's a, from my front door, there's maybe a ten-foot swath that you can't actually see May Avenue from anymore, especially in the wintertime, of course. So, and while I was discussing that lot, I heard it come up. I was sitting back down. That's actually one of our biggest concerns too, and it's hard to see on this particular picture, but that's one of our water zones. That's one of our problem areas is exactly where that lot is at, so.
All of, all of my neighbor's property here to the south actually drains directly straight into that lot. Right now, there's three natural features, two red rock, out drops on my property, and a water diversion on both sides, straight into this cross, still the ones currently working on my property because of what's been done. In fact, you're behind my barn, and what's been done right here is where I had to come in and do some work on the burn to immediately get the water back up onto my property. So this is currently the only one that's still working naturally, having to be bought. Just throwing this little in here.
I understand what you're saying, you can't do anything about the mine. That's already there. I'm just concerned about what the future plans are in regards to, to the, to the plot.
So, so you're saying that water drains from that property to the south and it drains across your driveway there?
Yes, we have a natural, this is what we put in ours, so it just goes.
Oh, so is there a culvert under your driveway? Oh, okay, alright. Any more questions of Mr. Robertson?
No.
Thank you, Terry Haynes again. Point of clarification, the property to the south of Cheval addition drains north. And then it drains west. Now, of the Cheval property, if you study the existing topography and the package that was provided to you, drains onto Mrs. Willingham's neighbor to the south. His property drains onto her property. And, and as part of, of normal development, we have to receive waters, uh, we will continue to receive waters that naturally occur. And we accommodate the, the receiving of those waters through the, through the, uh, what will become the water feature, through the levee and through the opening of that, uh, pond that then eventually reaches May Avenue right away and then runs under May Avenue, uh, through a pipe. And we've designed, the designs that were submitted to Mr. Trumbull's office, uh, has all the calculations to show that this retention-detention facility will accommodate the developed runoff from this property as well as hold the water, uh, as a natural feature out there. But we are not draining to the south onto our neighbor's property, to this day or in the future.
Okay. Mr. Haynes, uh, is your, is this your client's home here on the property that will be on the large lot toward the front?
It is, it is not at this time. Uh, there is a home that is there. She has a, a home planned on this property.
Okay.
And in fact, I do have some renderings that shows what that would look like, as well as the renderings of the barn, Mr. Vaughn, that you asked about.
And I think you introduced yourself as a, an engineer or?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. Have you ever talked to, uh, Mr. Robertson?
I have not personally.
Okay. I'm gonna suggest to both of you that it'd be a good idea, maybe you talk, should he be willing to visit with you, Mr. Robertson, about questions you had about this development? Is that fair?
Quite fair. In fact, Mrs. Willingham reached out to Mr. Robertson's family yesterday again. She's, she's talked with them several times over the last several years, uh, via phone and email. So, there's been communication going on, but we'd be happy to continue that communication.
Yeah, I can see where there could be, you know, maybe some hard feelings about how this property's been used.
Sure.
Hopefully, it's gonna be starting back the other direction.
That is why we're here.
And, and, uh, you know, the plans look like that could be a, uh, a very beautiful development. Um, but I would just urge, you know, communication between the two owners as much as possible and through you if need be.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vaughn.
Mr. Willingham and? Sure.
Cheryl Willingham. Uh, my address is two oh eight five three Cortona Drive. And I had not planned on addressing the commission because I don't like to speak in front of people, but I have spoken to the Robertsons on multiple occasions throughout the process of this pond issue. And I've tried to be as accommodating as possible. I have an email, I've been to their home, um, trying to make the effort to keep them as, as pleased as possible. Um, part of this is out of my control because it is in litigation. I cannot touch anything over there at the present time. Um, so, I was shocked, quite honestly, when I got this, um, this com- um, letter um, saying that they were opposing this because I've talked to them. They have my phone number. They call me, I won't say on a regular basis, but we've talked many a time. Um, I reached out to them as soon as I got the letter. I talked to Mrs. Robertson and her first comment was, "Well, I didn't think you were gonna see that until tomorrow." And I, I asked her why she didn't reach out to me and she said she was too busy. And, uh, you know, I just don't, this is going to improve their property. This is going to fix all the things that they don't like. But she told me that they didn't want more than five or six homes up there. So, I don't know where we go with this, but I have reached out to them. I've tried to be a good neighbor to what I can have control over.
In the letter, he makes reference to the fact that there have been people using it, uh, perhaps trespassing, using it for, you know, motor shackle riding, racing over the road, whatever. Were you aware of that?
Okay, I know that the homeowners, that was our previous, uh, uh, home, and we sold it.
The big house was your previous home?
Yes.
Okay.
We sold that three years ago. I know that the homeowners that live there have four-wheelers. I'm assuming it's probably them, but no one has ever called me ever and stated that there were people living under the trees or that people were recklessly driving four-wheelers or anything like that. I would assume that it is people or grandkids from the people that bought our home because we told them they can use the property, however. And I know for a fact that their granddaughter was hurt on a four-wheel accident in that area going too fast and stuff like that. So, I know they do have four-wheelers and I know that they've used it before. I'm assuming it would be them.
I think all I'm suggesting is, you know, you can't control what they do, he can't control what they do. But you do, you are the owner of the area, so, uh, maybe you do have some degree of control. And I think communication just would perhaps help, you know, everybody. So, I, I appreciate you reaching out to him. They need to communicate back to you.
Yeah, she...
Perhaps they have, uh...
Well, she indicated she would call me back in five minutes and I never heard anything else. I sent them a copy of the previous plat after I called Eric and hadn't sent it to me, and I received no other response.
Thank you.
One second, please. I just have to come back up. I know this isn't the proper place for this, but however, communication is a two-way street. So, we had, we communicate with Cheryl in regards to there being problems. We are the ones that typically have to start the conversations in regard to issues. When we have agreements in place that we're not gonna do work on Saturdays, Sundays, we're gonna start work, stop work at five o'clock in the evening, we're gonna stop, not start work until eight o'clock in the morning. When those things are constantly violated, when there's constantly problems, when there's constantly issues, we have been as cordial and as polite and as easygoing and understanding as you possibly can be for the past four years considering what's been next to us. I don't believe there's anything else we could have done better. Communicate what? That I had to call somebody to get somebody off of her property? They were not the neighbors. They were not the neighbors' kids or grandkids. The gate is constantly left open. I'm the one that closes it. To keep people from driving straight off May Avenue down the mining road, which has direct access to my home. I'm the one that closes that gate. I'm the one that monitors that property to keep people off of it. So, just in regards to communication, it is a two-way street. We haven't talked to anybody in regards to this property for the last seven months. I was not made aware nor given a phone call or courtesy to that there would be a zoning change. So I did not reciprocate her lack of a phone call with one myself. This is how I found out about it, was through the United States mail. So, I just wanted our day here. Thanks.
And the gate is left open by the dump trucks that are hauling the dirt out?
Whether they work for her, they're her contractors, it's her property, yes. I'm not opening the gates. I'm the one having to go back. They're open right now. They've been open for eighteen days. I've just, I'm kind of done, so.
But, but you were, uh, a part of this meeting and this change, were you not?
Through the US mail, not by Cheryl. I was not given a phone call or email.
The planning commission did that as their request?
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions or discussions?
Yes. Yes, excuse me.
No.
Uh, so we're really not talking about a zoning change because it's already zoned to do this. We're looking at just approving or denying the general plat that's brought to us today. Um, I, I wonder, just a question, if it would be reasonable for, um, if there's a motion to approve, if the commission, um, would be reasonable and, and applicable for the commission to approve, like, some kind of site proof fencing or additional trees to be put in to, you know, create a better buffer between, um, this property and the, um, the resident to the south in the motion.
You're talking about such changes that were not really affecting the next round. Then looking at the general plat, that's all we do at the moment.
Okay, alright.
Do you approve of the general, how, what, what's going to be done? The next step is permanent, like, she has provided plenty, uh, for you to review, you know, the warranty and all those things. Permanent, like?
Okay, so at this point, that's, that's nothing we need to worry about.
There's nothing more thrown without, there was an additional tree or something in the United States. It's reasonable, huh?
But we have to pass approve or deny items obtained until we, we decide.
Right, approve to the definite, so we can go on to put them in.
So, if there's no more discussion, I'm going to entertain the motion to approve or deny.
I'd like to make a motion then to approve the general plat of Cheval GT twenty seventeen dash oh one.
A motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Is the motion a second or a roll call, please? Is the motion a second or roll call please?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. DePerry?
Yes.
And Mr., Commissioner Vaughn.
And in hopes of, that this will lead to the improvement of your situation, Mr. Robertson, I have, oh, yes.
We'll now go to extend to item number nine, discussion of possible actions to approve or deny the preliminary plat of Cheval TP 2017 dash oh two.
We've, we've discussed most of, of the preliminary plat portion. They've submitted their plans, they've been reviewed by the county engineer and, and any information that needed improvement, we've submitted that to them. And I believe they supply us with a new plat with those amendments to those. So, uh, I believe they're pretty much covered.
You can begin your portions or-
Any portions for me? Um, approval of the preliminary allows them to start moving dirt. It looks like old roads.
Oh, okay, I've got a question. Now, and I, I can't see very good on this, on this tiny drawing, but-
You need a bigger one? Here we go.
Yeah. Okay. Um, now, I mean, Ms. Martin had mentioned, uh, something about screening. So, there's Lot 13, there's the residential common area B, Lot 3, and residential Lot 4. And I believe those one, two, three, four lots are adjacent to Mr. Robertson's property. Now, uh, on this preliminary plat, it, um, there's no indication of any type of a buffer or screening. Is that what you were thinking about?
Right, right. It looks, they talked about a, a common border, a common tree line, and there's a gap there, it appears. So, I mean, I'd just like to see that gap filled in with some trees.
Terry Haynes, SMC Consulting Engineers, 815 West Main, Oklahoma City. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Cheryl Willingham again. So, for the record, um, so there is, uh, there is a line of trees that has already been discussed, especially on Lot 13 that exists. And again, it's, uh, the subdivision regulations with this property, this is not a rezoning case, this is a, a plating case. Uh, but the zoning regulations doesn't have a specific requirement for screen fence or additional trees along the common boundary around its perimeter. But I, if you give me a minute, I'd like to pass out a few exhibits of what this development would look like as she adds the, uh, the entrance to the development of the, uh, as high class as, uh, what's, what was recently constructed around the corner, Cortona, Cortona. And, uh, so to give you an idea on the, on the caliper of architecture and, and the pride that will go into the development of this subdivision. If you're familiar with, uh, the Cortona development around the corner, um, she has a, she's incorporated a, a very nice facade in the entrance, gated community. And in fact, I have some pictures of that to go along. But what's in front of you are the conceptual ideas on the frontage to this development along Cheval Drive. Also included in that package are a few architectural renderings, one of which includes the barn that we discussed earlier on the general plat and, uh, basically placing a facade around its perimeter to bring it up to a, a level of architectural, um, that the residents in the subdivision would come to expect. So, again, it's, as far as the, the buffer between, we, we feel that this development in itself, by, by converting the mind of pit into a amenity with a lake is an enhancement to our neighbor.
I have one comment on that. I understand that looks, and it looks great, and it does look like it'd be a good, a good addition. I'm just thinking like in that common area B where there's that gap. I know that you're not required to do that and it's not on the plan, but sometimes a goodwill gesture of planting a few trees, that's six trees.
Six trees?
I know, six trees spaced out that might fill in.
And there are trees along that border. Uh, it's difficult to see on the areas, I know that we have on hand, but there are trees along the border that are existing. And we'll, during construction, we wanna leave those trees in place.
And this is where the neighbor's home is here, and there's a, a blank space in there.
Tyler, do you have the, the development plan? Ms. Martin, I think that there may be a, a drawing in here that could illustrate what you're looking for. That's already in place.
around here. Okay. Let's see what we're talking about, right here. These are trees. These are-
Oh, okay.
And a berm, it's a berm like that.
Now, if somebody purchased Lot 13, uh, they can do whatever they can along, along the farm. If they wanted to cut the trees down, they could. I mean, would it be possible to, uh, have a stipulation for Lot 13 that these trees knock whoever buys that property, let's put it easy. Somebody could basically clear that out more or less.
But if it's on the common line, they're not gonna be able to, as they could in here.
Right in there.
Okay, that is my question.
All right, and those, those trees would remain there. But there's no stipulation of those trees being, so they couldn't cut them out? The, this building is going to be shut down at 3:15 due to the possibility of tornadoes or any action. Um, if we can finish the meeting, we will. If not, then we're going to have to continue to another time and date.
If there are no other questions, do we ask for approval?
Yes, well, we're gonna ask for a, a, a motion to approve or deny the preliminary plat of Cheval TP 2017 dash oh two.
I would make that motion to approve, um, were you, were you ready?
Yeah.
To approve the preliminary plat of Cheval, um, TP 2017 dash oh two. I'll second it.
We have a motion on second. Do we have any more discussions? If not, then we have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. DePerry?
Yes, and, and I agree with, uh, Commissioner Vaughn that hopefully the neighbors can work together to, uh, you know, improve the situation.
Commissioner Vaughn?
All right.
Okay, I will now relinquish back to Chairman Jones.
No, it's in.
It's in, also? All right. Discussion of possible act number, addend item number 10, discussion of possible actions to express erosion and road bond to maintain erosion control during construction of the Cheval residential subdivision.
Yes. This is the erosion control, uh, farm that's been submitted and, uh, we have, uh, done the full, uh, the, the survey. And, uh, this is the company. And, uh, leave on the last page there in the city, the actual copy of the check for that amount, and these are the things that they're trying to do at four and a half. Erosion control. This is to sure that she done all those things, uh, for maintaining the property during construction.
Do we have any discussion or questions on this for staff? Do we have anybody wishing to speak for or against this proposition? Is there?
Ryan Robertson, 22800 North Main Avenue. Just a question as far as once again, the oversight of it not getting done? Cause it hasn't been done for the last four years, so what's the consequence to it not being done? Cause it really-
We could cash your bond and do it, the county did.
Okay.
That's the reason for a bond.
And so-
If she doesn't do it, we cash it back.
Exactly. So, this done on a quarterly inspection, yearly inspection, is it a complaint by me?
We do it all the time.
Okay, sorry.
We do it all the time.
Thank you.
Mr. Robertson? Um, we asked her, Mr. Haynes, to provide you with a copy of the set of plans-
Yes.
-of the development of that, um, as well as the depictions. So, I think if you make contact with him, that would facilitate that.
I will.
But I, I think you'll find some, hopefully some degree of comfort perhaps in the plans, uh, which are very detailed. And I can also tell you that Ms. Willing, Willingham, I think, uh, although she is new to the real estate development business, she does have one prior addition, which is Cortona.
Yes.
Which has turned out well.
And I wanna say, I, I have no problem with Ms. Willingham's building capability. She's amazing. She built my brother's home. I've seen many, much of her work. The home that she built on that property is absolutely incredible. I'm not questioning that at all, it's more of her business style or sense of urgency to get things done.
Gotcha.
I was gonna jump up on the previous issue and ask the question kinda similarly. Is there a standard of time? If someone asks for this to be done, can this just take forty years or does it expire? Is it, so when, from when she gets started, does she have a time when she has to stop? Can this just go forever?
So, basically, once they approve the preliminary plat, they have one year to come back to the final plat.
Okay.
So, they cannot start selling homes until the planning commission and the board of county commissioners approve the final plat.
Okay.
So, that, that's a timetable that we're working on.
Okay. And then is there another timetable after that, once the final's done?
Once the final plat's done, then the bonds that they've submitted as far as erosion control and road bond that they'll submit, those bonds stay in place, the erosion control bond for one year, and the road bond stays there for two years.
Okay.
So, to make sure that the road stays the way it's supposed to be and the erosion control works the way it's supposed to work.
Okay, great. So, no construction would start until after the final?
As far as actual homes. Now, you're gonna see construction as far as roads, the road Cheval itself, the cul-de-sac they mentioned, erosion control, to get that up, you'll see that type of construction.
Probably where I should've jumped up there again is cause I'm not sure what the guidelines are for the construction road?
Well, the construction road is basically to take traffic off of Cheval that they're gonna build to keep all the heavy traffic off that road so it doesn't create long-term damage. So, basically, once that road is complete, then they'll use the construction entrance to complete that, and then once that's done, the construction entrance would slowly go away.
Okay, that was my-
And they might use that for some of those homes on that side, there would be my guess. But that road would slowly go away.
Okay, and that was my other point. There's no restriction against that? Against-
No, actually-
Put a construction road wherever they want?
To be, I, to be honest with you, that's kind of an ideal situation to keep traffic off that road that they're gonna construct, just so there's no long-term damage.
Oh, no doubt. I'm not, if I were them, I wouldn't have done it the exact same way, but, I mean, it's, it's terribly inconvenient for me to have it right next to my home. So, I thought there was some type of buffer to keep that away from us.
Not trying to be pushy here, but we do have to vacate the building very quickly. And if you and Eric could have that conversation at a different time, I'd appreciate it.
Yep.
And then I would, if there is no other discussion, I would ask for a, uh, motion to approve item number ten.
Accept.
Accept, excuse me, accept item number ten.
I will. I, I'd like to make the motion to accept the erosion control bond to maintain erosion controls during the construction of the Cheval residential subdivision.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
And Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. DePerry?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vaughn?
All right.
Okay, I will now turn the meeting back over to Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. With apologies to, uh, the next item, uh, K and G, KBGE Engineering, I'm going to entertain a motion to recess this meeting, uh, to be reconvened at a time and date that will be set by, uh, Mr. Gavin. Is, is that all right? No?
No, we have to actually, if you're going to recess, you actually have to set the actual date and time.
All right.
At the time of, of the motion to recess to all these people.
Yeah, I understand. Okay.
And there's no, there's no further due to the time to do additional that.
And, Mr. Chairman, um, if we might just explain why, uh, the state has actually closed all state facilities at three o'clock today. We're gonna shut down the county building at 3:15 due to a severe weather, uh, situation. But the governor has already closed the state facilities as of a minute ago.
Can we make the motion then?
Next Thursday is open.
All right. Can we make a motion then to move it to the next plan, signing commission meeting?
No.
No.
No, next Thursday.
Next, next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
At one thirty?
At one thirty, same place.
Same place, same station.
Next Thursday, okay.
Everybody agree with that?
You made that motion.
You made, she- She, Mrs. Martin made the motion.
Mrs. Martin made the motion.
What's the date, Mrs. Martin?
That would be the-
Twenty-four, is that right? I'm looking here.
Today would be the 25th.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth of May, at 1:30.
I'll second that, Commissioner.
Okay. Can someone else second it?
I just did. I just said it.
Okay, good.
Okay, I'll call for a vote.
Uh, Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DePerry?
Yes.
And Mr. Commissioner Vaughn.
All right. Thank you very much. I apologize.
May 25th, 1:30.